Alright, it's 5:30. We're here tonight for the public hearing on the FY21 budget. Today is Tuesday, May 19th. Hopefully you joined the meeting through your computer or smart device to participate in the meeting. To comment or ask a question during the public comment portions of the meeting, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom. From a computer, click on the participants icon at the bottom of the screen, then click raise hand. From a mobile device, tap the raised hand button at the bottom of the screen. All social distancing protocols are active and we are limiting the occupancy of this room to 10 people. With that, we'll turn it over to Wes for the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Commissioners and citizens of Oconee County. I come before you tonight to present the Oconee County Government Proposed Budget for Fiscal Year 21, which begins on July 1st of this year. The FY21 budget as it stands right now in its current form of proposal is sustained and balanced. We've taken a conservative approach due to the uncertainty in current environment that we're operating in. The budget is driven by the mission statement and strategic goals. Smart government, smart growth, smart infrastructure, and excellent quality of life. We want to establish institutional operating practices that meet the needs of the present without compromising the ability of future generations to meet their own needs. Just a snapshot of the general fund budget. It's balanced at $31,247,891. Again, balance means that the revenues meet the projected expenditures. Total proposed budget is $53,315,602. The total expenditures include SPOS, general fund, special revenue, and the enterprise fund, which is also water resources. Revenue summary. The gross digest continues to trend upward well over 2.67 billion, so there is increasing property value. There was no millage rate growth in this budget, so the millage rate continues to remain at 6.686. And there's a decreased sales tax revenue projection resulting from COVID-19. Revenue is going to maintain the financial strength and stability of Oconee County and through its millage rate. Proposed general fund revenues. The FY21 budget revenue is up about 2.43% from the current fiscal year that we're in. The pie chart anticipates the revenue by source. So the majority of it is in your blue portion, and that's your 53%, which is property taxes. And then up in your upper left is your local option sales tax, and that's about 20%. And then there's other charges in there. Other taxes include insurance premium, financial institution, cable franchise, and real estate property taxes. License and permitting, grants, fines and forfeiture, and investment and sales also make up a little bit of the revenue. Overall increase is $740,000. If you look at the two line graphs, you can see the FY20 revenues and the FY21 proposed revenues. Getting into expenditures on the general fund side, there are no additional personnel in this FY21 budget. Healthcare costs continue to rise. Okay. There we go. The budget has streamlined the cost of healthcare and offers more choices and more options for employees. This effort resulted in a 5% net increase in healthcare costs overall from FY20, our current year to FY21. Additionally, the expenditure side of this budget does not require any fund balance usage. We've balanced the budget using existing revenue streams and future expenditures. The budget has long-term sustainability and resiliency by being fiscally sound and built for the long haul. Other goal-based expenditures are sewer network maintenance, our transportation improvements, road maintenance and additional road improvements, our state-of-the-art fire equipment, our fleet phase replacement program, strategic maintenance of facilities. And then I want to talk a little bit about operational measures to hold discretionary capital purchases for a time period. So kind of in order, our transportation improvement plan, we have accounted for $693,000 in LME, which is a grant, and using SPOS of 1.6 million for a total in road improvements of about 2.83 million. We anticipate also using some fund balance for to complete some projects, which I'll talk a little bit about later in the slideshow. In fire readiness, state-of-the-art fire equipment, including another fire engine. These items will be purchased using SPOS funds. Our fleet phase replacement program, all vehicles and equipment are based on mileage and equipment hours in general over the overall condition, and then they're replaced as they meet those hours of those miles. And it's updated on a quarterly basis, which is keeping our fleet healthier than it's ever been. The overall strategic maintenance of facilities prioritizes maintenance for facilities, which will increase the life expectancy of each building and the overall condition thereof. As far as operational measures, there are some capital purchases that are budgeted for, but what we want to do is hold off on those discretionary capital purchases until January 1st of 2021. So with that six-month delay, it enables us to budget for it, but also to hold off on that purchase to see where we're at six months down the line after we can further analyze the financial impact of COVID-19. Proposed general fund expenditures. We have a similar bar graph and a pie chart. So again, it's going to look similar because it's a balanced budget, so you got a 2.43% increase. The FY20 expenditures are in the blue line graph, and then the orange box is the FY21 proposed. So it's again about $740,854 up from 21. The 745 increase is comprised of essentially three areas: public safety, public works, and elections. For public safety is the sheriff's office, MDT upgrade, mobile data terminal upgrade. These are laptops that are in each patrol unit. Public works, roadside mowing and solid waste. And then elections, there was a slew of state mandated initiatives that we were required to implement. Okay, FY21 proposed total revenues. This is the entire budget. Looking at each line item of revenue. So leading the charge there, you have property tax at 16.4 million, water sewer, which is an enterprise fund, is part of the overall budget, and that budget is at $10,272,800. You have your SPOS project list there at 8.6 million. Local option sales tax, that was reduced from last year. You see it at 6.3 there. That was reduced from last year. Because we just simply think there's going to be probably a negative impact on sales tax based on businesses being able to. And then you have your others, grants at one and a half million and some of your other income revenue. Total amount is $52,633,138, and that's a balanced budget. FY21 proposed total expenditures. You have a comparison over 21. It's about a 2.3% increase in 21. And largely, this is from some of our enterprise fund activities with a couple of major projects that we have going in those areas. Waterline extension, water pressurization systems. Also included in our total expenditures is a SPOS budget at 8.6 million. For continuing road infrastructure improvements and other projects. Capital budget, the capital budget is funded out of the general fund. It's $407,299. That includes our fleet vehicles and that phase replacement, a cat excavator, two servers, and aerial flyover. Our fund balance allocation, I wanted to talk a little bit about fund balance. Estimated fund balance as of 6/30/20, in 45 days, is around $11,225,000. So what I would like to do in the next few weeks is assign a fund balance. And that assigned fund balance would allocate projects that would be funded from assigned fund balance. So let's list those projects, and I'll just read those out one by one just for clarity. Malcolm Bridge Road Roundabout, $561,377. SR53 Snow's Mill Roundabout, $250,000. SR53 Ray's Church Road, $250,000. Mars Hill Phase 2, $375,000. Loop 10 Intersection Improvement at Epps Bridge Parkway, $200,000. Our LME grant from the state, which is for general road project, $683,394. And then the animal services building renovation, we have that in our SPOS dollars, and we'd like $195,563 to supplement that and finish that project off and stop. Prepaid, $250,099, and then unassigned fund balance reserve is $8460,184. That unassigned fund balance is actually an increase of about 2.5% from FY20. So we're going to 27% fund balance with this FY21 proposed budget. So those are your projects. That doesn't mean that those projects will be completed at that amount. Some of that is for funding for land acquisition, design work. Mars Hill Phase 2 obviously is an extensive project, but that identifies the funds out of fund balance to get those projects going. And in some cases, complete them like the animal services renovation or the Mars or the Malcolm Bridge Roundabout. That concludes my presentation for tonight. The FY21 budget will be available at the BOC reception desk, the library, and also will be posted on the county's website tomorrow morning. This budget will be discussed for adoption on June 2nd and at another possible date later in June, once this is agreed upon. I do appreciate everybody's work and input on this proposed budget. I'd like to thank the staff and all the department heads. There'll be a fee schedule also. You have that before you. The highlighted changes are in yellow, and that'll be available also on the website tomorrow as well. If there are any questions, I'd be glad to answer them at this time.
Alright, we'll go ahead and open up public comments if anybody wants to raise their hand from the viewing audience. While we're waiting on that, if any commissioner has any questions, we'll take those at this time as well. If you can go back to the fund balance allocation sheet. So the unassigned fund balance is basically your rainy day fund to help fund the cash flow and any unexpected emergencies that come up. So that number is actually up over the previous year.
That's correct. Yeah, that's correct. That estimated fund balance shows that we have a very healthy fiscal situation. State recommendations range from 20% to 25% on what you should have for your unassigned fund balance or your rainy day fund. It's about, it's over 90 days of continuous operation, three months, and we're at 27%, so that's a very healthy number.
And that's after completing these other tasks that are listed above. Mars Hill Roundabout was funded. We also received $300,000 from the state. So really, the net that the county taxpayer paid out of general fund is the $261,377.
That's correct. That's great. We have received a state grant of $300,000. That money's already been received. I just have to demonstrate it in this manner because it is council's revenue. That was a grant funded by state from GDOT.
And so Snow's Mill and Ray's Church is kind of stuff we've talked about at different town hall meetings, where we're working with the state of Georgia to get these tough intersections fixed. Mars Hill Phase 2, as you remember, is placed for letting sometime in the beginning of 2021 with construction sometime in that calendar year. We did have to spend money on updating plans, and so that money is worth that designated for. The 10 Loop at Epps Bridge Parkway is a hotspot for accidents. And Jody with our public works department is working with our district office to get some quick response money. So with us pooling money with the state, we're going to be able to take care of some of a location that has two or three accidents per week. And about 25% of those are accident injuries, so a lot of resources spent on that one intersection. We'll talk more about animal services after they make their presentation, but with collections down a little bit and the amount of money that's available to them, we'll be asking for designation of fund balance over the next couple of meetings to reach the goal that they need to reach to complete all the tasks that are necessary to get animal services up to the correct condition. And I appreciate the board's support. Over the last couple of years, we've been implementing a new financial system, and that was really awesome, this budget cycle. It made things a lot quicker, especially when we started out pre-COVID with getting numbers in, and then all of a sudden, the world changes and we're able to react very quickly to correct that. And I do want to point out the financial stability of the county with the COVID situation that's going on. All these tasks that we're working on that are part of our strategic plan that we created back in 2017, we're still able to increase our unassigned fund balance. And just some of the things we've been able to do over the last several years is OVP fields were completed ahead of schedule with SPOS money. We also secured future parkland through partnership with the water resources department, as well as looking at closing the LAS, which will create another 245 acres. Of our general fund, we funded a partnership with the sheriff's office for litter pickup. Completed countywide transportation study, a May Court's transportation study. And that's where we came up with a lot of the things that are on the list here today. Also completed this year, Mars Hill, Berger Langford, Rocky Branch. So we received a lot of good comments, and a lot of y'all go through that intersection quite often and know what a challenge it was in the past, as well as our first roundabout at Malcolm Bridge Road and Mars Hill Road. As we mentioned, we're working on these locations that are listed here. But we're also, Jody, with our public works, is working with Department of Transportation at Union Church in Highway 53 to see if we can get a light or some kind of improvement there at that intersection. Public safety, fire stations, we've done a lot for the fire service over the last three or four years. And visitors bureau has been created. And then this week, construction and renovation started on the civic center. So if you go by there, you'll see a lot of activity going on. And then really, I mean, animal services, while we got the flooding stopped, there's still a lot of conditions that need to improve down there. And I think, once we hear their presentation and we can commit that additional fund balance, they're going to be in a really good place for the future. And this is all done at the same time maintaining the seventh lowest millage rate in the state. So there are only six counties in the entire state that have a lower millage rate. So I appreciate Wes and the staff and everybody that's spent a whole bunch of time. Basically, we did two budgets, one pre-COVID and then one after, but it's been a real fun process and challenging. And I think we have a good product here for everybody to look at.
Yeah, I just also like to thank Wes and his staff for all they do. Very accessible, easy to get to, and get questions answered on a quick notice. And I think you and your staff are very well-trained staff and extremely qualified to do what they do. And I want to thank Justin and John for all the stuff they've been giving us too, because it matters a lot that we have all the information, and we do always get the information we need to make sure we can make good decisions.
Any other questions, comments, or emotional outbursts?
I will also mirror the thanks because I don't know that there's a county commission, at least in a county government our size, that has completed as many projects in maybe what, two and a half years, if not quite two and a half years. I mean, from the time we met back in January or February of 2017 at OVP, and we made our list of what we needed to do, and we just attacked it and knocked them out. And I think, you know, it's when you see the projects that we've done that have been to the benefit of the people of this county, the multi-use fields, knowing, you know, those little ones out there don't know us. They wouldn't know us from Adam, but they get to use that. We're working on the senior center, and, you know, the good work that we've done with the Bogart Library and to continue trying to help. It's been a pleasure. I don't, like I said, I know in my first two terms, we never did this much. And I think the numbers and we, you know, one of the big things, people were wanting us to spend the money that they voted for for the SPOS, and I think we've done that. We kept the Watkinsville, the courthouse in the center of Watkinsville, and we're adding 9,000 square feet for the judiciary. So I would challenge any government, especially our size, to match it. And it's been without any drama, which I think is a testament to, and our friend Bubba Wilkes is not here, but he was certainly part of that, and it's just been a pleasure.
I'd like to also say that I appreciate all the staff, the department heads, and some of your outside out there. But I certainly do thank you, Wes, for your leadership in this as well. And I think it's a team effort. I mean, we're all in this together. And especially in the times that we're all right now, you know, it's uncertain of where we're headed. And I think we've got a great plan moving forward. We've got some flexibility. We've got financial security. And I think that's a great asset to citizens of Oconee County that, you know, we've got leadership that are taking care of business here. So thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make one general comment. So from the challenge, just dealing with the COVID and the revenue, and that's what really, this is what we're talking about here. There's 159 counties that are trying to gaze into the crystal ball and see what the next six, 12, 24 months look like. So the approach we took, you know, you can look at whether your revenues are going to be L-shaped or B-shaped. We took a 4% D-shaped revenue where we think there will be some comeback, it'll come back, and we won't flatline like it was, say, in 2008. But the way this budget is constructed, it's got a, we have to anticipate the possibility that we have the But the way this budget is constructed, it's got a, we have to anticipate the possibility that we have the L-shaped revenue, they don't come back. And so there's levers in there that we can pull without detrimenting core services that will sustain us through, through the fiscal year going forward. What we didn't want to do was overcommit, but understand we have some obligations. Again, a hundred fifty-nine counties are dealing with state mandates on the elections. And so we've been able to accommodate that as well. But that's the approach that was taken so that we could sustain our operation, move forward without getting ourselves in a perilous position based on the unknown.
Thank you. All right. Thank you. With that, we'll go ahead and, and close our public hearing on the budget for May nineteenth, two thousand twenty. And we'll come back in about five minutes to start our regular meeting. Thank you. All right, it is six o'clock. We'll go ahead and call our meeting to order. We want to welcome to the O'Conne County Board of Commissioners meeting for tonight, which is, tonight is May nineteenth, two thousand twenty. Social distancing protocols are active and we are limiting the occupancy of the room to ten people. Hopefully you've joined the meeting from your computer or smart device to participate, to comment or ask questions during the public comment portions of the meeting. Please use the raise your hand feature in Zoom. From a computer, click on participants icon at the bottom of the screen, then click raise hand. From a mobile device, tap the raise hand button at the bottom of the screen. If you raise your hand prior to the public comment section being opened, it may cause issues with you being recognized. Also, we will not be placing any item on the consent agenda. It's been our practice during this time. In just a moment, we'll ask you to stand for a moment of silence and then we'll ask Kathy Hayes to lead us in the pledge.
Thank you.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. Our first item of business is to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda as submitted.
I second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Now we'll accept statements and remarks from citizens. If anybody from the viewing audience would like to click raise your hand if you'd like to speak at this time. Anybody from the audience wishing to speak? Very good. With that, we'll move on to statements and remarks from commissioners.
I don't have any.
Okay. Would like to make a few announcements while we got everybody. First, early voting started yesterday, May eighteenth, and will continue from, on Monday through Fridays from eight AM to five PM until June the fifth. At the Board Elections Office located across the street, Saturday voting will take place on May thirtieth from nine AM to four PM. And the office will be closed on Monday, May twenty-fifth in observance of Memorial Day. Also note that the Elections Office is strictly adheres to the CDC guidelines regarding six-foot social distancing for the safety of voters, as well as the poll workers. Also want to let you know the O'Conne County Veterans Memorial Foundation will host a virtual Memorial Day program on Monday, May twenty-fifth. That'll be eleven AM and you can view that on the O'Conne County Veterans Memorial Foundation Facebook page. Also, this week, construction begins on the roundabout for the bus staff entrance on Malcolm Bridge Road. This construction is only for the roundabout at the bus staff entrance. No plans for construction at the parent entrances are finalized at this point. We received excellent feedback from our town hall meeting that we had a few weeks ago. We also have held additional meeting with some, with local homeowners from the area. And we're excited about their interest to help us get the best solution for that corridor. With that, I hope to announce an, an additional in-person town hall meeting sometime after June twelfth. Chairman Odom has agreed to, to the use of Malcolm Bridge Road schools, subject to any additional COVID nineteen restrictions that may occur after June twelfth. But we're really excited. We got a lot of participation and good ideas. So really excited about that coming up. With that, we'll move to our first item, which is discuss revision to the resolution for issuance of citations for county ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a real rote item. This is a quarterly. We do just updates. The staff has the proper authority to issue citations. This is simply just updating to comply with current staff.
Very good. Do we have any questions on that item?
Yes.
Any public comment at this time? Very good. Our next item is the Animal Services Expansion Project Update. Crystal?
Good evening. Thank you for having me. I'm Crystal Barisco, manager with the County County Animal Services. We have selected a contractor for the renovation project, Peak Steel, and have all the, we have an all-in price of seven hundred thirty-eight thousand, six hundred and forty-three dollars. This will complete all phases of the project in its entirety, given us a long-term solution to serve the citizens and animals of O'Conne County. I would like to ask for the board to, for approval at the June second meeting.
Very good. Need to add something?
Yeah. So we backed into three items. So the, the fund balance element of it, this was a SLOSS twenty fifteen project. And so the collections on that are going to be a little over five hundred thousand dollars. The original thought was to put it, put the phase two to finish out on the SLOSS twenty-one project list. But because Crystal did a great job identifying the needs for, as far as scope of services, we were able to get a bid that was pretty close to what the fifteen was. So if we just assign, which the item of a hundred ninety-five thousand, five hundred sixty-three from our existing fund balance puts the existing money to work, we can complete the entirety of the shelter under the fifteenth SLOSS and not have it on the twenty-one going forward. Just handle our needs for a long-term solution and handle it now.
Thank you. Great. Any other questions? Any public comment on this item? Thank you. That was very close to the seven fifty that was asked for in fifteen, so that's pretty good. Thank you. We've had some wild ranges on what it would cost to do that, so thank you. Next is discuss the concessionaire agreement with O'Conne County Little League and also the O'Conne Football Club.
Good evening. This is an annual agreement that we've had for the last several years between the O'Conne County Little League and the O'Conne Football Club to operate our concession services and our various concession stands. The agreement is the same as it has been the last two years, which would include revenue from O'Conne County Little League in the amount of five thousand dollars to operate Bogart Sports Complex concession stand, the OVP multipurpose, and the OVP baseball, softball, and occasionally Herman C. The O'Conne Football Club would then operate the soccer concession stand that they've been doing at, at the amount of two thousand dollars. So we recommend that we continue working with them to operate our concession services. If y'all have any questions, let me know.
That's good.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Easy transition.
Any public comment for this item? Very good. Next is the item is to discuss the bid award for the courthouse HVAC project. Alex?
Good evening, Commissioners. The O'Conne County Courthouse's HVAC system is over twenty years old and most units in the courthouse are end of life and use the outmoded R twenty-two refrigerant, which is no longer produced. Earlier this year, staff released an RFP to replace the courthouse HVAC system. This RFP was based on engineering documents produced by Johnson Spelman and Associates. The RFP committee met and unanimously decided to award the bid to Jones Mechanical Contractors. The project is expected to take place over three years and in four phases, starting with phase one and two and FY twenty-one. Phase one includes the replacement of the cooling tower, heat exchanger, electric boiler, pumps, and the installation of a modern building management system. And will cost two hundred fifty-two thousand, nine hundred and thirty-nine dollars. Phase two includes the replacement of first floor water source heat pumps. It will cost ninety-nine thousand, six hundred and eighteen dollars. Phase three is planned for FY twenty-two and includes the replacement of the second floor water source heat pumps and is expected to cost a hundred and twenty thousand, four hundred and eighty-nine dollars. And finally, phase four is planned for FY twenty-three and includes the replacement of the third floor water source heat pumps. And it's estimated to cost a hundred and fourteen, eight hundred and six dollars all in for all three years and all four phases is five hundred and eighty-seven thousand, eight hundred and fifty-two dollars. Staff recommends awarding the bid to the, for the courthouse HVAC replacement project, Jones Mechanical Contractors, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
This is SLOSS fifteen funding.
So, yeah.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much. Do we have any public comment on this item? Thank you. Next item is review of the proposed twenty twenty-one special purpose local option sales tax budget.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If you recall, we've gone over some of the general project lists in the past and there were approximately eighty million dollars worth of submitted proposed county projects over the course of, of all the departments. Obviously, that would not be feasible. So what you have before you is an estimate of, of potential referendum revenue collection that would begin in the fall of two thousand twenty-one, run for the course of six years. And this is something that would ultimately be voted on in the November presidential election. And so just briefly, the best, our best of all possible world scenarios, we're projecting sixty-four million, six hundred forty-eight thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. And so the reason, the way we came up with this essentially is if you look at the ten-year trend, we're running about four and three-quarter percent annual growth on our sales tax. And so, but we're also factoring in a decrease of four percent this year and some tail on the back end of that. So that's where you roughly get that number. That's the best scenario. There's a few other changes that we're going to monitor as far as the marketplace facilitator and some, some online sales tax increase as well that comes as part of state law changes. But the more likely scenario is you see the eighty percent allocation and that's what we typically budget for from a project list. So briefly to run down, you have the general obligation debt. This is the OVP park debt, which is at four point three million dollars. I'm, I'm going on the eighty percent allocation. Under the capital outlet, the water and sewer facilities at six million dollars, the road streets, bridges, and also trail potential eleven point five million dollars, farmland protection at six hundred thousand dollars, fire station rescue facilities and equipment at three point one million dollars, historical, historic and scenic facilities at a hundred thousand dollars, the library slash administrative building at five point five million dollars, the general county facilities at three point one, which would fund projects similar to what you've just heard as far as HVAC replacement renovations, the broadband project at five million dollars, recreational and park facilities at two point seven million dollars, courthouse renovations at five hundred thousand, law enforcement vehicles, a little over two million dollars, with an estimated forty-four million, five hundred eighty-five thousand of county projects. The municipality, a divvy based on population share, according to this revenue, would be a little over seven million dollars for an aggregate eighty percent allocation of fifty-one million, seven hundred and eighteen thousand, six hundred dollars. And then six, sixty-four million, six hundred forty-eight thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars on, on a full referendum. Happy to answer any questions you may have. As far as timeline goes, on June second, which is the Board of Commissioners meeting, there is, the mayors of the four cities have been invited as, as part requirement to attend to have further discussion on some of the projects, which would also entail the municipality total. And then after that, we will approve the IGA for the ultimate share and distribution.
Very good. So on June second, we expect most mayors to be here or either join us through a Zoom meeting to accomplish that task. Any questions of Justin or the project?
Yes.
Any public comment? Very good. All right. We do have the need for an executive session in reference to land acquisition.
Make a motion that we adjourn to executive session for land acquisition.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'll make a motion and go back into regular session.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aha.
All right, we have no other business or no reports to make, so Commissioner.
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
We are adjourned, thank you very much.